We have a board, let's begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you move all of the...
I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
I will second that. And on favor, we vote. The next meeting of the oral select meeting will be Thursday, July 15th at 5:30 here at the town hall. I have no other comments.
Have you, Rhaina?
No.
Let's then jump into comprehensive planning.
Not much to report on comprehensive planning at this point. I reached out to the state to see if Tom had any opinion about how we can move forward with the comprehensive planning process without an appointed committee. If he's seen that process done before, or if we could just resubmit our previously accepted plan and see if they'll accept it for a second time. I haven't heard back from him. But I expect to... And Mcked is ready to assist us with the process if you want to go down that path. They would be able to walk us through the different sections and make some suggestions if you want to take those steps at this time. Or we can just wait to hear back from the state. We still don't have anybody who's expressed any interest in serving on a committee.
I won't wait any longer than the end of next week.
Is there anything in the plan that is... that needs to be altered from the last time we submitted it? That changes have happened in the town or anything that falls in that? Or can it be resubmitted access?
I think there's probably more current data that could be plugged into different sections that probably the state could provide. But other than data, I'm not sure that there's much updating to do.
We should probably then do the updating as it is so that we can at least have that piece ready. So whatever changes that are data specific, not... But any changes would need to be approved, is that true?
Yes, the plans have been approved.
Or can we resubmit?
Well, we would send it to the state first before we put it before the town.
If we don't alter it, does it have to be approved?
Yes.
So we should make the changes then?
Yeah, we've got to alter just for the numbers and facts. Some of those will change. Heartburnation, school use, Irish or one now. So there are different things going to be...
So we should just... We should make the necessary changes that have to be made?
I think...
Yeah, the obvious changes, right.
Yeah, so we would at least get that piece done before we... You know, because then it's current, I guess is the best way to put it. And I don't know at that point. Well, I guess we'll get from the state if we want to have a quick meeting so that we can have a tally and a vote on it and then submit it for... So we can do grants or...
We submit it to the state first.
Right, it has to be approved by the state before we put it before the town. Or even if the state says no, this doesn't comply, we could still have the town vote on it, but it wouldn't be.
But we're exempted by the state. And the purpose to rush into it now is to have access to grant money.
Yeah.
So we need to have it except if I'd say that I presume we have access to grant money.
Well, to score better points for the grants, yes.
So if Tom gets back to us by the end of the next week?
Well, we can't...
If you can find at least probably on vacation.
It's possible. The last time I corresponded with him, he said that he would be happy to hop on a Zoom meeting if you wanted him to, just so, you know. You would be able to ask him questions directly, which might be helpful.
Do we have the plan that we share of this as a digital file? So we could look at that and see really what should be changed?
Do you have it in a zip file? Yeah.
You could probably put it...
Well, the document itself isn't...
You could probably put it on... Do we have access like Google that you could post it and then we can...
I'm not great with Google. I mean, I can't access our website. It is on our website actually for download, but it's just a document. It's just a 300 page document.
In my spare time.
Yeah, actually 300 pages is a very daunting part of the plan.
Better than our tax commitment vote, which is posted online, so.
If you can... It's the easiest. It is not the most exciting.
Yeah, but there's certainly...
You can go through and find a section that you need to do one section at a time. Would be my recommendation because unless, of course, you're having trouble sleeping.
I'm having trouble sleeping.
Okay, well, not healthy, so, yeah. But it's huge.
No, but I'm saying we should edit the pieces that we can.
Right, oh, absolutely.
So that it is as current as we can get it. I think you should probably do that before we send it to the state.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
I think we have to take into official action on that one. Business item two, the Maine-Purse Plan clarification.
Maine-Purse has asked us to clarify the action taken by the voters at town meeting for that one change for the firefighters. So what they need is for the board to make a motion to accept the verbiage that you're looking at right now. You would need to read this aloud into the record, make a motion to accept. And then Carly will attest to some incentives to make further progress.
Okay, this has been it. Allow the changes to...
Right, and they'll take effect on August 1st.
The document reads... "The town agrees..." "In order to clarify the action taken at the town meeting, the town agrees to provide Special Plan 3C to its full-time firefighters who work 36 hours or more per week, 52 weeks per year, and its fire chief for services rendered after July 31st, 2021. Service rendered before August 1st, 2021 remains under regular Plan AC. Continue to provide regular Plan AC to all other full-time employees who work 36 or more hours per week, 52 weeks per year, and to its assessors' agent and any future code enforcement officer. Continue to exclude all other employees who work less than 36 hours per week and/or less than 52 weeks per year, and its elected appointed officials, except for the fire chief, assessors' agent, and code enforcement officer from participating in the plan. And finally, to authorize Christine Pollan, town administrator, to sign the amended agreement between the town and the Maine Public Employees Retirement System."
So I'm confused here. It says it's for the firefighters, but then there's other employees coupled under this.
I think it probably makes more sense to Maine-Purse than it makes to us that they need to see that this particular language is adopted and they're the ones who wrote this. Basically, it's saying that employees who work 36 or more hours per week in those specific job duties are eligible.
So it's really not just for firefighters, it's for any employee?
That particular plan is for the firefighters.
It's for the firefighters.
The other plans are for the other employees.
Right, that's what we're providing already as pension.
And we don't have anyone who's 36 hours a week in these capacities, do we?
It doesn't matter, to me.
No, I don't think we do.
That's why it's confusing.
Okay.
Would you like to second that motion?
A second motion that we adopt the Maine-Purse Plan for our town employees.
And all in paper. And the business item number three on the agenda is the annual town meeting. And the note on this is that due to the success of the referendum-style meeting, there's some conversation about whether or not to have referendum-style town meetings rather than open town meetings. Would you care to say more?
I think that it was very successful. The comments that we heard from the townspeople is that they felt less disenfranchised and more able to express their opinion by voting on a ballot. Even though most people voted in favor of the articles, they felt more comfortable. Part of what this ask is of the board is that if we go to the referendum-style town meeting, we would no longer have to vote for candidates in November, which is a very uncommon practice. And it would create more efficiency in voting for the candidates in June along with the referendum election. The staff is in favor of this, we wanted to vote the idea.
Just off the top of my head, I would rather we didn't take actual action on this tonight because Kathy's not here to put any opinion.
Right, no, it's important.
And I recall distinctly when we were discussing whether or not to do this in view of the pandemic, seeing while I'm not in favor of going to referendum-style vote instead of town meeting, I still feel that way.
I think we're limiting dialogue, which is healthy. We don't have the opportunity for people to speak.
Well, we would still be required at a public hearing, just to make it clear. We would still have an opportunity to talk about the articles, but it just wouldn't be in the town meeting forum.
Did you get any comments from people? Or you must have. Have you not gone to town meeting in the past?
Oh, yeah, a lot of people wouldn't have gone to an open town meeting.
During the pandemic?
Just generally speaking.
What were their comments?
Over the past 10 years, our average town meeting attendance has been 24 people. We have 169 this year, which was in part due to the library encouraging people to vote, I would assume. Also, the fact that in the presidential election, people became accustomed to absentee voting. I think that familiarized people with the process. So we did have beat-up numbers. I think it is hard to tell during a normal year how many people would actually choose to vote. We had a few people show up that were confused because they thought they were voting on the CMP corridor, which is also heavily advertised. So there is some confusion as to when you post an election, people think state election. So, but I think it also opened a lot of people's eyes to the town elections.
Is it possible to do both? Where you have... Where you can offer the, I'll say, advanced ballot if they're not coming, but still have a town meeting?
No, no, it's one of the other.
Actually, I think open dialogue's healthy.
Yeah.
And it's... So I just... And I... It's... I mean, when you look at the people that came this year, and again, I don't believe it was a game. We had three people. When we had the... When we did the...
The informational session.
Yeah, there's sort of a big people. I mean, there's sort of... That's way less than 24, the traditional. So I don't... This is, I think, a tough year to make that call because there's so many factors that...
No, that's fine. We're just putting the idea out there to think about because times are definitely changing. And like Carly said, people are used to absentee voting now, they like it. If you want more people to weigh in during your town election, that's the way to do it. It just depends if you want to go down that path or not.
It's sad and sensitive. I'm in favor of town meeting, not... But the fact that you were, you know...
Three times as many.
Three or four times many people voting. It's valuable to what the town wants, what the citizens want. It is better recorded what the citizens want, I guess.
But that's what I'm wondering, is there a way to have vote? I mean, or if you have... If you don't want to come in person?
You can't.
You can have an absentee ballot.
The law doesn't allow it.
But I do suspect, as Carla mentioned, a number of voters came with the ballot because of the library question. But it's hard to say how many.
If we move to a referendum ballot, that would need to go to a town vote. So the town would have the final say on whether or not, correct? Now the selectmen can choose?
Yeah, and I asked MMA twice to clarify. And they said that, no, you would just have the candidate's... The candidate's terms if you were to do it this year. The candidate's terms would expire in June. They would be extended to expire in June. And then it's the selectmen's call whether to have a referendum or an open town meeting.
So if we were to make this year... The change this year, then the person who is up for election or the seat that's up for election would be held until the next budget town meeting, which would be the actual town meeting.
Right, and Julie suggested making the term go through June 30th, so it would be a clean fiscal year for April. So if the town meeting was held the second Tuesday in June, the person would be elected in, but they wouldn't actually be given until July 1st?
And it's an unusual process to have an election in November and then a town meeting in June, that's unusual.
Definitely, yeah.
But last year's information meeting, we got like 30 people anyway. Now this past year...
Now this past year, before.
I don't remember.
There's a lot of people at information meeting.
Because of the information distributed about ordinance change. That was about the rain sheds.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. I think that more than likely there's going to be a more or less hot button issue any year that's going to draw a certain constituency.
Right.
I'm not so sure we should do it this year. I mean, I hear it, but there's factors that may have contributed to the turnout that I'm not sure exists to that level. And so I don't want to make a decision coming off of an unordinary year.
My... I would probably be more radically opposed to change if I hadn't heard this idea floated any number of times for the last, beyond years.
And I think we should also wait for Kathy before we even have a meeting.
No, I think we need to have this discussion and then some. And let, you know, I think probably if we let people know specifically that we visit this either the 15th or the 1st ones. Is there a deadline of how much time we need to inform the people?
Well, it's really... If you're going to put out nomination papers, that's probably the earliest date, right?
Right, and that's the end of July.
End of July. So Carly would need to know about nomination papers.
Right, that's a very soon required response.
The third week in July.
Yeah.
I don't know, we should wait for Kathy, but I... But I'm not... It's not... There's a lot that's...
I just think it's something to think about.
Yeah, I'm not really for or against it. I don't think this is the right year to make the decision.
And it would be interesting to see what kind of turnout we would get at an open town meeting next year. That would be an interesting study. Post-pandemic, where we can meet.
And that could be the deciding factor. If we only get the last 24 people, yet we had the majority of our townspeople have the option to speak their mind, then we say, okay, here's our test. But I don't think that... And we should share with the town too. That, you know, whatever we're going to have as special, we should put it out for people to come to the meeting, the meeting that we're going to talk about it and hear their feedback on what they like.
From what we know about what's coming up, would the 15th be as good a day as any?
Yeah.
To let people know?
They could even have a public hearing before the meeting to give people time to voice their concerns in an open forum.
And would you collect the fire station just in case?
Yeah, or we...
In case people do show up?
Yeah, that could be fine.
Because I think it's important to get feedback other than from just us.
And I've always been an advocate for open town meeting too because I think it's cool. But over the years, fewer and fewer people in every community are showing up to participate.
Every... There are 200.
People may rate it a day.
And I want to stay ahead of the curve. You know, if we're going to get 14 people at town meeting next year, I would rather have a referendum.
Well, that's a huge deciding factor. But the year before, or two years before that, we had... The school was full because we had...
A misunderstanding about ordinance change.
Right, so but it's... And then it's sort of hard to determine.
But we had a hot button topic this year and we decided it by referendum.
Right, but that was, I think people, I'll say conceded to that because of COVID. And I don't want to make a decision for them presuming that that... We don't know why they did it.
Sure.
And that's just my concern that we're not... I'm all for whatever the town wants collectively. I just don't want to make a decision that...
If you put some kind of survey of the town, just like this saying, are you in favor of a referendum town meeting? Could we do something like that?
Oh, absolutely.
Just to see if you gave any response?
Yeah, and we could do that leading up to the meeting on the 15th. So we have so many people responding this way. I just want to make sure that we do what the majority wants.
Just to see what people...
And I think as an introduction to the survey, the first sentence in the agenda this year's referendum-style meeting, town meeting was, the success would bring a turnout than less bad was experienced in recent open town meetings. Do you think that this is the way we should vote? Something as simple as that would be sufficient, I think.
Well, I think what I ask that I think we need to put in there, did you... Did you... Were you more comfortable voting due to COVID? Or is this how you let to go? Because you want to determine why it was...
You need the question quite simple. Can't be a wordy question.
But you have to... Because this is an odd year to make a determination.
Well, maybe other people have thought a long time before they want a referendum.
Well, because I've, in the past, heard two former board members suggesting that that would be a better form of getting more people in...
To understand it.
More people that have voice in how things are going. So there's...
Which is important to hear that.
Right, so let's just agree that we'll take this up again on the 15th at the fire station and invite the general public to come in. Should we, like, start at 5?
I think it's time to do it.
Start at 5 to...
For a general session? I wouldn't start the meeting before 5:30, but you won't...
Right, no.
But that's how I was thinking, like, public hearing and then the meeting afterwards. Because I'm sure that discussion could go long.
Yeah, so if we had a forum or workshop or however, it's best to say that and the meeting will be... The board meeting will come to order at 5:30 as usual.
It doesn't need a formal hearing, just a workshop.
No, just to... Just to get feedback.
I think that would work.
Yeah, I think it's a good way to certainly hear what people want.
Okay, sounds like a plan. And let's see, committee appointments. Continuing our committee appointments. Liv Woodworth has agreed to serve an additional one-year term as a member of the recycling committee.
Thank you, Liv.
Shall we approve Liv Woodworth?
Can we do this without having... Yes, I can.
Yeah, we're a core.
I didn't have all three yet assigned. But yes.
So I move acceptance of Liv Woodworth as a member of the recycling committee.
I second it.
Call in Cager.
Who Cager's the form?
Do you spell it? I'm sorry. It's not... Because, you know, in the summer, I have to get back to my blueberry tea.
I also included a copy for committee liaisons showing everybody's position in different committees. I am taking Carly's place as liaison to the recycling committee. And Carly is taking Julie's place as liaison to the planning board. That frees up some of Julie's time to help with the transition for the readout, which is really important. She has the most institutional knowledge about how things work around here.
Yeah, I think that's a good move. But we don't have to... We don't have to vote on that because that's an administrative decision. And Christine, may we have your reports?
Well, I included some legislative action in your packet on correspondence. There's a few changes of note. First one is an act regarding remote participation in public proceedings. So in the future, after July 30th, I think, if we're going to allow or if you want to have an opportunity to allow remote meetings or have people participate remotely, we have to have a policy to that effect. I think it's worth adopting a policy just in case we have to remote in people who are a significant distance away. For example, if you want to have a discussion in a trio during the revaluation process, they can remote in from wherever they are and have a conversation with you.
So does this platform go all the way down to allow people to vote? If we're going to... Is this to open it up for our community? So if we're having a meeting and they couldn't come tonight, but we had a Zoom access, I presume that we would allow them to?
I'm not sure how that would work, but I'm sure it would encompass that too.
I would... One of the specifications is that as many public bodies have become accustomed to during the COVID-19 pandemic, all votes taken during remote meetings must be conducted by a role model.
Right, you're talking about the boards.
So... But I think it would be hard to figure out how to have a town meeting by Zoom. I'm not necessarily a town meeting interested, but we could... A vote could be taken as long as the people who were voting were eligible members to vote. Like, the planning board could vote on planning board business.
Yeah, and you have to have a specific, you know, a very valid reason for having a remote meeting. It can't just be, well, we don't want to meet in person. It has to be that somebody is a significant distance away or there's an illness or something like that.
Right.
But in order to have that option, we will need to adopt a policy.
Well, you can adopt it in the SLYU as well. So it's good to have it stated in the policy that you engage.
Does our Jensen Bear attorney have drafted suggestions as to how to set a policy? does our Jensen Bear attorney have draft suggestions as to how to set a policy?
She might. She might have something ready to go even. I have no idea that I can ask her.
And I was supposed to say she really hasn't been here. Is in-person meeting a fall? We have definitely.
That would be
I could put something together.
Yeah.
And yeah.
It's easier.
We'll discuss it at a future meeting.
It's easier to have something in front of us.
Right. I don't want to leave you in a position where you have no option to have a remote meeting. Right, because they could be helpful at times.
Well, I think it's I think it could be very helpful. I think most of us are going to be much more aware of that if we have a cold, it might not be a good idea to go to a meeting.
Wouldn't be applicable for weather if we had a snowstorm and it was too severe to drive, would that be?
That would apply too.
I travel for work. I can call in.
Yeah, you'd be pretty far away.
Constitutes distance.
Good.
Good point. I do travel though, man. I do travel for work. We've had move meetings because I have you, so.
The next item is Juneteenth. There will be an additional paid state holiday. This is where a subsection of the state West Bath's employees would have the same day off as the state employees. So that would be June nineteenth of each year starting in two thousand twenty-two.
And when that falls on a Sunday, will the Monday be
Correct.
The holiday, the same as all the other federal holidays?
Right.
Okay. And since that's an act of the legislature, we say thank you very much on the right edge.
And the final one is an act to update and eliminate references in statute to selectmen and overseers of the board. So this public law was adopted and we consider it in effect right now. We've already started making changes to the website and to documents. So you are now members of the select board, assessors, and overseers. You can also refer to yourself as a municipal officer. But no more references to board or selectmen. Selectmen or overseer of the board.
We're overseers.
Yes.
Who prompted this?
This is the legislature state.
So who's going to pay the change in the signs?
Well, I guess we are.
Send a bill to the state.
So we're we're going to find pockets over the years where we miss things. But over time, we will make the changes and try to remember what to call each other.
They'll use the public.
You can use a comment wherever you want when the camera's on, it's okay.
Well, you can do that. So we are members of the board of the select board.
Assessors.
And overseers. And we are also the assessors and overseers.
So you're no longer selectman Hennessy or municipal officer Hennessy, municipal officer Henry, so it's generic gender.
Gender neutral.
Gender neutral.
Well, I have to say that I was surprised when I came back to Maine and found that almost everything else had been made gender neutral. We were still a board of selectmen. So this is
But it's for all women to vote.
It is timely, particularly at this moment for the town of West Bath.
Wasn't that a time auto tradition?
It was a time one. We're not following that particular one anymore.
Yeah, things are changing.
Yeah. But it's great because yet you can be called an alderman. Not a selectman.
No, no, no. No. Municipal officer.
Municipal officer means the mayor and alderman.
No, I don't believe there's a municipal alderman.
No. Members of the board.
We're actually only one-third of the mayor anyway. Each of us.
So that's good. So this is simply information?
Yes.
So we would request that members of the town, the citizens, would refer to the select board rather than the board of selectmen?
You got that, David?
A lot of people want to
And everyone else is sitting here, we're all on board.
There's a lot of people doing that anyway.
Yeah, I mean, this has been going before the legislature of any time. You have to know that at some point it's going to
And it's no longer the overseer to the board, just overseer?
Overseer.
Just general overseers. Well, that makes sense because really, we don't have a town farm anymore. If we ever did, I think we did once for the town.
That was probably out of power.
Probably, yes. The heads who bore on. Well, it was for a long time. My grandfather called the road into the into the farm, the Poverty Point Road.
And the only other item I have tonight is that we received the letter from Bill Brewer's office for the annual audit for the year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. So I will sign it, get him lined up for the next audit.
Okay.
Good.
That's it.
Well, that's simple.
What is that letter for?
The annual audit. Will you sign an engagement letter every year?
Just might make the firework special tonight after all, they actually all have.
I was getting one.
So at this Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, David, I were having a problem.
The board will come to board.
Select board.
Whatever board we're on. Would the public like to make some comments besides
The future agenda items first?
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a future agenda items.
We have the 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 review of town meeting.
Yeah.
And the next one.
Yeah. And an update on what's going on with the cop plan.
Right.
Anything else for Kathy? Can you show up? Well, I'm sure that she won't be retiring twice in a month, so. Public comment? Any further comment?
Anyone? Anyone, David?
I've had a few comments of it. I'll say.
There you you've had you've had your fill of commentary. Okay, so before we adjourn, I would like to reiterate that we are going to change the place and time of our next meeting. At five o'clock on Thursday, July fifteenth, we will meet in a workshop format to have discussion about the prospect of changing to a referendum-form town meeting. And that at five-thirty, the select board will begin its regular meeting with a five-thirty call to order. Anything else?
I remove that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
On paper.
Stand up.
All right.
Good.
Think of her considering the town meeting.